Okay.
Wait, why did that? Why is that? Is that me? Stop sharing. It is. Oh, how did that get up? Oh, yes. Oh, yeah. What?
I.
I don't know.
Why?
Okay.
We're good.
Okay, good evening. So it is 7:01. And so we're here for our public meeting of the Danvers Planning Board. We're here at Danvers Town Hall in the Toomey Room. It's March 25, 2025. I'm Lou George. I'm the chair. I'm joined here today by Gene Hartnett, our clerk, and by Jim Sears. Tim Spittle and Mike DeCulless will not be here today. And we're joined also with Josh Morris, Principal Planner with the town. So and so why don't we start off with with our agenda? And I do want to mention, I think, just at the outset, I mean, just for folks who might be here, just in terms of walking through the agenda today, we do have it. We'll begin. First item on the agenda is the Transportation Needs Assessment. It's a discussion with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council staff. We do also have two other items on the agenda, the For 50 Independence Way and for Trask Lane. And it's my understanding, Josh, that both of those will be continued. We'll be moving to continue those. Okay, so so those items will not be will not be discussed today. So the one substantive item we'll be discussing, the first item on the agenda, is the Transportation Needs Assessment. I think we have a guest today from the from MAPC. So I guess I'll turn things over. If you want to introduce yourself and.
Great, thank you.
State your name for the record and kind of go from there.
Sure, sounds good. My name is Sarah Scott. I am a Senior Regional Land Use and Historic Preservation Planner at the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, MAPC. We are the regional planning agency for the greater Boston part of Massachusetts. We are one of 13 regional planning agencies authorized by the state that exist to cover all communities and support all communities statewide. Our region does include Danvers, which is why I am here today. And we have been working on a project with town staff, mostly led by Brian Zickelli, the Planning Director, on what we have been calling a Transportation Community Needs Assessment. It is an opportunity to really take a look at what some of the challenges and opportunities are in Danvers specifically related to transportation, because there have been topic or location-specific studies that have been done, but not really at a higher level. And so Brian had actually applied for funding from MAPC to have us support doing a project, a study of this kind, so that we could help guide the town in making decisions about how to prioritize future planning and future infrastructure investments around transportation, rather than kind of going at it blindly and making assumptions about about what was best. So I put together a presentation that shares some of the work that we've done to date, some of the findings we've had to date. I will note that we are very much in the middle of the project. We actually have a public survey out right now. So at the end, I'll have some information about the survey and would love for everyone who's listening or attending to take the survey and share it with everyone you know. We're trying to get those numbers up so it can be representative of the community.
I've taken the survey.
Excellent. Thank you. Preaching in the choir. All right, let's see if I don't mess this up. Okay, so.
And so just before we begin your presentation, so what do you anticipate? Obviously, you'll be giving a presentation. Will we would you like us, you know, to will you be asking us questions? We obviously have members of the public here as well. So how do you sort of envision the presentation?
That's a great question. So you actually set me up perfectly for my agenda slide.
Okay, great.
Share a little bit about project goals and context, go through those existing conditions that I had mentioned, talk a little bit about goals and opportunities, and then and then mention the survey. I think really around the existing conditions review, if you have questions or reflections about the data that we're sharing, then that's an opportunity for conversation. And then similarly, when we talk about goals and opportunities, I think that's really where I'd love to hear from you in terms of what you think the town should be focusing on and how we should be starting to develop recommendations for the plan.
Okay, great.
And and would love to hear from members of the public as well.
Perfect, okay, great, thank you.
And I will try not to take up your entire evening, knowing that your other items have been continued. But this has been a really interesting project. So so as I mentioned, really, the crux of the project is trying to identify what are the communities' needs when it comes to transportation, more broadly speaking. So rather than going directly into doing a bike and pedestrian plan or doing a commuter rail shuttle or doing a repaving plan analysis, right? Like, instead of going very deep, trying to have that higher-level needs assessment. And part of what we want to look at is understand where there have been barriers in the past for implementing transportation-related changes, because the town has done plans and studies in the past related to transportation, but those recommendations haven't always been been carried forward. And at the end, we hope to have recommendations for the town in order to meet some of these community needs by implementing recommendations right away. But also, there'll probably be some recommendations for for closer study. And then the last bullet is just a reference to Mass General Law, which has a citation that gives communities the the opportunity to develop a comprehensive plan, also known as a master plan. And Danvers does not have a comprehensive plan. And so part of what Brian, the town planner, was hoping was that this project would essentially be one of many plans, almost like a constellation of plans, related to the different topics that comprise a master plan. So we're doing a master plan kind of piecemeal. So one of the things we do with pretty much every project is try to understand what are the baseline demographics in a community. And part of that is to make sure that we're getting a clear picture of a community. And part of that is to understand, are there are there populations within a community like Danvers that we maybe wouldn't hear from in a typical planning process? And especially folks who would be most impacted by decisions that are made relative to the process. So so on the left, I just listed some of the high-level statistics that we had pulled, mostly from the Strategic Danvers Plan that was done recently, and then also from the Housing Needs Assessment, which was done as part of the Housing Production Plan. And so in 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 my reading, these demographics help us focus on what some of those priority populations are. So in this case, we know that there are about 650 households that don't own a vehicle, which is a relatively small number when you look at the overall population. But that's still 650 households, right? And so thinking about how do people in Danvers get around and have their needs met without having a car? We also know that 13% of renter households do not own a vehicle. Renters are typically more likely to not own a vehicle or not be able to drive. So trying to focus on hearing from renters. Similarly, we know that seniors make up a large part of the Danvers population, and seniors can have different transportation and mobility needs. Families with children are a slightly smaller part of the Danvers population. But again, trying to recognize that those types of household compositions are going to be looking for particular strategies. And then also recognizing that about a fifth of the population in Danvers are people who identify as having a disability. And so part of what we were looking at with this list was also trying to understand who in town we should talk to. So we've had conversations with the Senior Center and the Veteran Services Group. We are having conversations with the Disability Access Commission. We've put out surveys through the schools. So trying to understand how to to really get the word out. So I have a series of slides here that talk about transportation connections to other topics that Danvers has studied in in past plans, and also topics that Danvers actively is engaged in today through different aspects of town administration. I will not read everything on the slides, because I know that there's a lot of information. But what I was trying to show on the left were the very specific statistics, so that I'm not just giving you the the kind of big-picture takeaway without having that background data. But then we can focus on the right, which is really that that big-picture takeaway. So when we're thinking about connections between land use and transportation, they're actually very closely connected. And one of the data points that we looked at was really trying to understand what are existing land uses in Danvers and how does that impact how people get around. In this case, there is a lot of single-family housing, both in terms of just the percentage of of types of housing unit, but also in terms of the land area in town. And so having single-family housing, especially on larger lots, can increase dependence on cars, because folks are more spread out. It's harder to have walkability and bikability and mixed uses. Another thing we looked at was the parking requirements and zoning, which are often quite high. And what a lot of studies have found is that by requiring parking for new development, it actually encourages people to drive. And so that's one of the things that we want to look at for recommendations. And then we were also trying to understand trends in terms of of new development, especially in terms of housing units. And what we saw was that there's actually been pretty significant growth in buildings with more than 50 units. And so as the number of housing units increases, there are more opportunities to support transit and active transportation through the development review that you do, but then also in terms of thinking about where that's sited. And feel free to to stop if you have questions or comments on any of these. But we can also wait until we get to the end of this section. This is a graphic that we had taken from, I believe it was the Downtown Parking Study that was done in 2015. And what it does is it compares the amount of building square feet, which is the the blue part of the bar, to the amount of parking, the amount of square footage dedicated to parking that is required for each one of these uses that's identified in the zoning ordinance. And so the the dash line that I had dropped down there is showing you where that one-to-one ratio is higher or lower. And so this is just reiterating a finding from the Downtown Parking Study that there are very high minimum parking requirements, even higher than what some of the more conservative traffic engineers tend to estimate. We also think about transportation in the context of housing and employment. What's interesting is that in Danvers, there are a lot of jobs that are based here, but not a lot of people who live in Danvers work in Danvers. It's really only 14% of the population. So residents mostly don't work in Danvers, and they mostly drive to work, because they don't have many other options. And the people who work in Danvers mostly do not live in Danvers. And they are also mostly driving, because they don't have that many other options. And so what we can think about here is a little bit of that mismatch between residents and and employees and how that can generate traffic congestion.
Let me just ask a question, just in terms of, as we're talking about the statistics here, in terms of people who work in Danvers, living in Danvers. I mean, has there been any change over time in terms of in terms of, you know, remote work at all, in terms of numbers of, you know, has that has that? I assume that that's changed over that that's changed over time. I can say that even personally, you know, in terms of I've gone from from working, you know, for, you know, going into Boston every day to now, you know, now working for the most part remotely.
Yes, I believe that most of the statistics that we had pulled from are based on the 2020 census. So they're probably not reflecting that as intensely. I do think that it's an evolving landscape as well, because there's also so many return-to-office mandates from different employers. And so I can I can take another look and see where some of the data had come from and if there's more nuance that I can share with you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you also hear about people who are coming into the, you know, who are, you know, I hear of the phenomena, too, of people even with back-to-work mandates are doing, I think, as they call it, the coffee badging, where they'll actually go into the office and they go and read about it, where you go, where they go in and they see some people, they go in, spend part of the day there, but then they go home.
Oh, I see, okay.
Come home at lunch or something like that. So they've done the in the office, but they've actually, you know, so they've shown their face, they've gone to the office, they've they've clocked in, in essence, but then they then they're on the roads coming back.
Right, so understanding how remote and hybrid work is changing traffic patterns. Yeah, no, it's a great question. We also looked at connections between transportation and climate. This was mostly looking at the Resilient Danvers Plan that was completed recently, which had done a lot of analysis already about transportation, especially related to emissions. So like many other communities in Massachusetts, transportation is a big chunk of the emissions that are generated in the town. And so what that means is that you really need to focus on reducing transportation emissions if you want to meet your climate goals. You can try to meet them through changes in, you know, in building and construction, but transportation really gives you a good bang for your buck. One of the other things that I thought was interesting was that there is actually a higher amount of vehicle miles traveled by Danvers residents than there are residents in Beverly and Salem. And certainly, there are so many different factors that you could think about that that influence that. But just showing again how Danvers is a little bit more car-centric than some of its neighboring communities, probably partly because of the transit that's available, but also because of those land use patterns. And then we also see that a lot of emissions come from people actually just driving within Danvers, which I found quite interesting. And so that points us to a need for residents to have options to travel within the town without a car. So it's not just about looking at commuting patterns or going to school or, you know, the grocery store, but also just getting around town. And I think there, for me, that's a really nice entry point for thinking about how the town can make improvements, because sometimes when you're thinking about transportation within a broader system, so thinking about, like, greater Boston commuting, right? It's it's hard to think about, okay, what are the levers that Danvers can pull there? This is a graphic that we pulled from the Resilient Danvers Plan. And so this shows the the sources of emissions. And so you can see here that gasoline is by far the the highest source of emissions compared to these others. We also were interested in looking at the town's complete streets policy and its safe routes to schools policy and programs. So these are two programs that are are essentially kind of national programs, national standards that are often administered by states and then adopted locally. Complete Streets is really focusing on the opportunity for people to travel using different types of mobility on the same street. And then Safe Routes to Schools is about making sure that there are ways for students to get to school that that prioritize walking and biking, as opposed to having to be driven to school. So just again, some statistics on the left about Danvers' participation in both of these programs, which is active, but also there's some room for for increased participation. The town has a Complete Streets Policy and a Complete Streets Plan. Those are kind of the first two tiers of the state's program. And then the third tier is being able to receive funding to really implement these projects, which the town has not done yet. And actually, Mast dot recommends revising prioritization plans about every five years. So so I am anticipating one of our recommendations will be revising the Complete Streets prioritization plan. And then similarly, there are a number of schools that are partnered with the Safe Routes to Schools program, but not all of them are. And then even those that are partnered haven't necessarily taken advantage of all the different offerings through that program.
How does, like, school buses fit into that?
That's a good question. I don't know the details. I think that the focus of Safe Routes to School is more on walking and biking. I think it's less about bus transportation.
For sure, yeah.
Yeah.
That's right.
Could you give a definition of Complete Streets?
Could you go and actually, I'm sorry, just for the purpose of minutes, so we can go? Yeah, could you go to the podium? Yeah, thanks. Address any questions to the chair if you don't mind.
Could you give us a definition of a complete street?
And could you name, could you give you a name? Sorry.
What?
Could you give you a name just for the record?
John Bouchard, from Crestline Circle in Danvers.
Sure, I can give that a try. So a complete street is, as the name somewhat reflects, a street that is providing space, providing opportunity for different modes of transportation. So it would not be exclusively for one mode of transportation. So most streets in Danvers probably have a roadway for cars to travel down and then probably have a sidewalk for pedestrians as well. And so that would be considered a complete street. You don't necessarily have to have vehicle, a vehicle travel lane and a bus-only lane and a bike lane and a sidewalk and, you know. Yeah, so it's so the name is is, I think, both reflective of the goal, but also maybe a little bit ambitious in terms of what complete means. Yeah, yeah, sure. So this is a map that shows the schools in Danvers. And it shows in the icons, it might be a little hard to see on the big screen, but the icons are color-coded to show schools that participate in the Safe Routes to Schools program. Those are the orange schools. They're all east of Route 1, if that helps you identify the colors a little better. And then the the kind of purple blobs that emanate from the the school icons is a half-mile walk shed from each of those schools. So it shows you approximately how far it would take to walk a half-mile from each school. And some of those walk sheds kind of meld into each other. I think what's interesting about this map, and something we can certainly talk about, is that it it gives you kind of an entry point to thinking about where you might want to prioritize Safe Routes to School program participation, and then also what types of Safe Routes to School programs that you might want to engage in. And then outside of that, thinking about, okay, well, where are there opportunities to actually prioritize just improving the sidewalk infrastructure, for example, or repainting crosswalks, because you see that there's multiple schools that are benefiting from the same walk shed? This might start a series of maps. We'll see, okay, not quite yet. We also were looking at downtown parking specifically, because we know that downtown is kind of distinct from other parts of of Danvers, especially the more residential parts, and because there had been a downtown parking study that was done, again, I think, in in 2015. And so what the study showed was that there is an oversupply of parking downtown, and that's based on these industry metrics for what it means to have enough parking that folks who need to are able to park, but not so much parking that you just constantly have a sea of open parking spaces. And that goal is really about having 80% of your parking spaces used at any one time. And the usefulness of the study, too, is that it was looking at both on-street parking and then what we call off-street parking, which would be more of those larger municipal lots. Yeah, I see a question.
Right, so so that percentage, and I welcome any other board members to have questions, too. But if 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 this is, so the percentage you're looking at, so when you're looking at this percentage, does that take into account, so that takes into account the street parking spaces and maybe a parking lot that is maybe a little further?
Yep.
Further down?
Yep, so the study had.
Is there is there sort of a, like, a certain number of yards or something that you look at in terms of what's considered, you know, frankly, close, you know?
So I know that the study had identified a particular boundary of of where they were studying the parking. And they did look at distinctions between on-street parking and those off-street municipal lots. And I think they may have distinguished actually between the off-street municipal lots and the off-street private lots as well. So so again, this is us just really trying to lift some of those those big-picture takeaways, but there's more detailed data in the study that was done.
Yeah, because there's definitely, I think, there's, I think there might be a difference between between statistics, as well as, I think, perceptions as well.
Yes, and I think that part of what the study had showed was that there is demand that is more concentrated in specific areas. And so that can lead to a perception that there is no parking available, especially if everyone's trying to to kind of get the spot right in front of the store at around the same time. And so one of the recommendations of the study was not about increasing or decreasing the supply of parking, but trying to improve parking management. So thinking about, for example, having on-street spots be time-limited, but having municipal lots be not time-limited, to encourage a little bit more turnover in front of businesses, for people who are parking in front of businesses.
Better signage, that sort of thing.
Better signage, exactly. So being able to say, don't worry, there's more parking just half a block away if you're not able to find it right here. I think one of the other interesting things from the study, too, was folks who really talked about wanting a more walkable downtown. And I think part of that is, like you were saying, really being able to show that there is ample parking and that you have the ability to park once and then walk to one or more destinations once you're downtown. So we are not focusing exclusively on downtown for for our project, but we did think it was useful to to single it out, because you have had focused attention on it. And we know that it's an important issue for a lot of people. Okay, so then we've got a few maps. So this is a map that shows roadway jurisdiction in the town. The the green lines are roads that are accepted by the town, so the the town controls them. And then the kind of pinkish lines are ones that are unaccepted. And then the thick gray lines are the the roads that are controlled by Mast dot. And so the reason why I think this is important to show is that And so the reason why I think this is important to show is that, yes, there are some roads that are not controlled by the town that may be contributing to transportation challenges or where folks would really like to prioritize opportunities. And, and, you know, maybe that is possible, and, and we can certainly talk about those sorts of recommendations. But also not being frustrated by the inability or, or the difficulty of, for example, having a conversation with Mastot about Route One access. Because the town actually controls 62% of roadway in Danvers. And so thinking a little bit about, okay, well, again, where can the town really prioritize investments? And where does it have the most ability to control what the outcome is? This is a map that shows the public transportation that currently exists in Danvers. As I'm sure all of you know and have experienced, there's pretty limited fixed route bus service, especially I know since one of the, the bus routes was taken offline due to low ridership. One thing that I was kind of surprised by not being from Danvers was that there's really no transit to get you to a commuter rail station. So you don't kind of have a reliable, almost like transit shuttle type of system to get to commuter rail. And that, for the most part, the transit that does exist, whether it's MBTA or the Cape Town Transportation Authority or Logan Express, is actually really focused on access to the Liberty Tree Mall. That's kind of become the transit hub as opposed to, for example, downtown.
And there had been, just so you know what I mean, there had been that, the, the bus route, which was the 465 bus that went from, and I know, because I used to, I, I would, when I worked in Boston, you know, sort of pre-pandemic, I took it. And you took it to the, and it actually ran in the morning. It had a, it had a quote unquote express that took, that left Danvers Square and it went directly to Salem Depot.
Hmm, okay.
And so they would do the same thing on the other way, on the other way around. So that did, it did exist, you know, historically from the down, you know, from the downtown.
That's good to know.
Yeah, and, and if, if you caught it during the other, the off times, it was, it would do the circuitous route through the malls.
Okay.
But then, but again, if you, if you caught it right in the morning or in, in the afternoon, 5:30 or 6 o'clock coming back, you, it was, it was the straight shot back in.
Okay.
Which was great. It was like, it was, you know, it took you 15 minutes or something.
That is great. This map shows the existing sidewalks and trails in Danvers. The orange lines are the sidewalks and the green lines are walking trails. I also know that there is two shared use paths that, that go through Danvers. And what's interesting here to note is that there's fairly limited sidewalk connectivity outside of the downtown area. So I think if you, if you gave this map to someone and they didn't know Danvers at all and you said, where is downtown? You could probably point to it just because there is more of a, of a sidewalk network in that area. And so folks that are outside of downtown, especially folks on the west side of the highways, really have quite limited sidewalk access. And this is shown in this map, which is a, a metric called Potential for Walkable Trips. This is a metric that, that Mastot puts together. And so what it shows in the orange are segments of that sidewalk network that have a, a medium potential for walkable trips. And then in red are the segments of the sidewalk that have a much lower potential for walkable trips. And so again, I'm sure as no one is really surprised, there's a higher potential for walkable trips in downtown. And, and part of that is because of the existence of sidewalks, but it's also sidewalks being able to take you to and from places. So it's connected to land use as well. And again, you can see that some of these lower density residential neighborhoods really don't have great walkability. And so it can make it challenging for people to get around without cars and can create isolation. This is a study that actually just came out recently and made the rounds in my office, which was done by, by a number of researchers that were looking at the correlation between car ownership and happiness. I, as a car owner myself, I, you know, I think that I like being able to drive somewhere if that's what I need to do. But I don't necessarily want to have to drive to be able to do everything. And so they were, they were trying to kind of look at this balance. And I guess their findings were that for, for kind of the average person in a typical week, if they relied on a car for more than 50% of their activities, then they actually reported a decrease in life satisfaction. So the reason why I put this up is just to kind of, to make the point that we're not necessarily looking at this study in order to say, well, no one should be driving, no one should own cars. But instead to say, it's, it's not about taking away this option. It's more about giving folks additional options to be able to make that choice when it works for them. The map on the right is the service area map for the Salem Skipper, which is a relatively new shuttle. It's, it's a type of transit called microtransit, which I feel like is a very challenging description to use. But basically the idea being that it's, it's, it's not fixed route and it's not operated by the MBTA or the Cape Town Transportation Authority. It's more of an on-demand service, very similar to an Uber or a Lyft. The difference here is that there is a service area. And so you need to be picked up and dropped off within the service area. And so as the name indicates, the Salem Skipper originated in Salem. You can see there's a much larger service area there. And then expanded to Beverly and now to Danvers. And so we have been trying to understand the role of microtransit, in particular Salem Skipper, as part of the overall transportation picture in Danvers. But then also how that relates to the use of ride share. The graph on the top left just shows ride share usage in Danvers, starting in 2017 and then going up to 2023. So you can see there was a bit of a dip during the pandemic, but overall, an increase in the use of, of ride share. And so whether that's because folks don't have a car but need to get around with a car or they don't want to drive, they'd rather take a ride or, you know. We don't know the details there, but at least just noting that there is this trend. So that's the main portion of what I was calling the existing conditions. If you'd like, we can take a break and I'd be interested to hear what you've learned, if you think that there's information that's missing that's important for us to know. But then also if you had additional questions, whether they were clarifying questions about what the data means. But then also if you had questions just kind of about how we might use it.
Sounds good. Turn to the board. Any questions? Jim?
Um, sure. I think obviously the downtown area is important because we're doing, we have all that additional zoning for additional development downtown and how that's going to interrelate with the need to create more housing downtown and to manage that traffic. And as you said, you know, ideas like perhaps 15-minute parking in front of the coffee shop or things like that to keep people moving along where they like to, think it's a Starbucks and stay there for four hours and do their taxes. You know, can, can help with that. But I think that's important. And like you said at the beginning, I think that the problem we're having with the bus routes is the lack of population that needs the public transportation, which, you know, would kind of reduce our likelihood of getting additional funded opportunities or maybe state aid, because I know our state rep is trying to get, you know, that bus route back. But if people aren't going to use it because they don't need it, or, you know, we love our cars. We do have that one development, I think, which kind of skewed your, I don't, I don't know, if you did this in 2020, did you take into effect the Big Maple Square building? Is that part of your building's over 50 units? Because that's really the only-
Probably not.
Building we have over 50 units recently. You may have, because that, that was approved a while ago.
Okay.
So that might have skewed your-
June of 2022.
Huh? Yeah, but we, we approved the zoning on that.
The Maple Square, the Maple Square project was approved in June of 2022. Just for context. I'm not sure exactly, yeah, right.
But we approved the 40A zoning probably a few years before that.
The, uh, the 40R, the Maple Street 40R was in, in December of 2017.
Yeah, so I don't know if that-
Yep. I'm not sure, yeah, what, Sarah and I can discuss that slide or that info or the data for that. It wasn't, I wasn't sure myself what that was referring to, but we could talk, we could talk about it.
Yeah, but I think that's obviously the impetus. Once that building gets occupied, and I know that they're working on that now, that's going to have a tremendous impact, I think, with the need for more downtown public transportation and, and parking management. I like the idea that microtransit and the commuter rail transit idea, if we could have like a, a certain area downtown to, you know, transport people right to the Beverly train station, that'd be a great idea. You know? And then the only other piece I think is try to, we, we talked about it at our last meeting in, in the fact of, you know, the ADUs, how that might impact your numbers as well, whereby you're not necessarily adding new homes, but you're adding these additional units and, and how that would kind of factor into future planning. You know, so, but I appreciate it. I think you did a great job.
Great, thanks, Jim. Jean, any questions or comments or?
I think it's a comprehensive presentation. Thank you. One of the questions I had on the school slide, it would be interesting to see the, the areas in, like if you differentiate between what type of school, whether it's high school or the middle school or elementary school, because there's a lot of overlap.
In terms of breaking apart the different ages?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then I, well, just from personal experience, like we are a lot more walkable towards Riverside and we're a flex street. So then we got put to Thorpe, which is not exactly walkable. So I know it depends on class sizes and things like that, but maybe there's a way to have people that are more walkable for an elementary school actually be put where they can walk to. And yeah, I like that you're focusing on parking management versus just adding more parking to the downtown, especially if there already is enough, just utilizing what we have. And then I also was not aware of the Salem ride share service. So that was good information to have. Thank you.
It's just information on that Salem Skipper. It's when you, I've taken it, it's actually, the ride cost is only $2. So I took a, a ride from, I walked to downtown and had to go home. And it was to Beverly and it was, it was $2. It was a good experience. I'd recommend, I highly recommend.
A little better than surge pricing, right?
Yes.
Is it on a certain schedule?
No, it's so, that's what's really nice about it. It's like a, um, the issue, the issue, but it just, I don't know if it goes till, I don't know if it's like one or two in the morning, but it's certainly kind of what you think of as like regular business. I, I, I believe it's probably at least like 8:00, 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM type situation.
Is there a certain app or something? How do you?
Yes, yep. It's called the Salem Skipper.
And what qualifies you to get use of it?
Just being a resident or working in Salem, Danvers and Beverly.
So it's the fact that you live in Danvers, you can, you're, as, as long as you're within that, I guess the-
As long as you're within the catchment areas, if that map. It's a, we, these, the three communities, Danvers, Salem and Peabody kind of went in like a joint, like we received funding. I think it was like a, it was a federal grant of some type, I believe.
There was some federal funding?
That was awarded, it was sort of like, it was like a pilot program, I believe. Brian and Aaron could speak more to it. Maybe two years ago plus. Salem, it, it had been utilized in Salem for a year or two. And we were, we've been trying to jump on. And we were able to, Danvers and Beverly was able to join. And I believe that access for Danvers folks was probably about a year ago, I believe. And I think it's still going to, it's a pilot, so there is, the end date is either in a year or two. And it's sort of a way to show transportation folks that, you know, this option is viable and we should continue to, you know, invest in it.
I have just a couple of questions, and I know, and also want to make sure we get some questions from the members of the audience too. Just a, just a couple of questions I had in terms of the sort of, you know, I know you mentioned some popular destinations and all. Have you looked into also some additional transportation? Like I know that we have, like Logan Express is, is now here in, in Danvers. And just, I mean, personally, when I've gone on work trips, it's been, it's been great. I mean, being able to, you know, I used to be the driving to the, to the, to Wonderland and taking the subway and leaving the car overnight a few days there. And, but then now you can, you can, you know, Logan Express is, is right there. So it's, but getting there can be a little bit challenging too at times. Like, you know, impose upon my, you know, wife to drive me to Logan Express at, you know, 5:00 in the morning.
Yeah, potentially you could, as we were just speaking, you could, you, maybe not, I'm not sure about 5:00 AM, but you could, you could do the Salem Skipper from your downtown, which you would be in that catchment. And you could take that, it would be a $2 ride from your neighborhood to the Logan Express.
That's, that's good. And I'm interested also sort of in knowing, just in terms of that, sort of the impact of sort of what, of people using Logan Express, because it definitely seems, it seems popular for sure. As well as, I'm also interested sort of, I know you said you've been working with the, the senior center. I mean, just, you know, my own, you know, you know, just anecdotally, I know my, you know, my mom made use of the, of the, of the senior, you know, the senior van, you know, when she, when she stopped driving. So that's definitely, I think that's been a great resource, I know, for the town. You know, the, you know, coming from the, the council and, you know, council and aging. So, and I guess the only thing that, that did, that surprised me a little bit is the, that did surprise me a bit was respect to the, I guess in terms of the parking in downtown. And I know that, that, that there's more parking than sort of the perception, but the numbers do, you know, surprise me a little bit. Does that take into account, I guess, I guess we'll see, you know, does that take into account potentially, you know, future development in downtown as well? Or does that's sort of where we currently stand?
Yeah, I think that's, um, oh, thanks. Okay. So the parking study, I believe, was done in 2015. And so it would have reflected conditions then. I know that part of the study included looking at what the development potential of downtown could be if the parking minimum requirements were lower and/or if shared parking was something that was allowed. So sharing, essentially sharing parking requirements and parking spaces across uses, even within the same development. So there was a little bit of that type of projection, but I think the study focused more on current conditions as opposed to, for example, I think folks were talking about specific developments, right? Like it, it wasn't necessarily a, like a, a traffic impact analysis that you would get as part of a special permit.
And, and in terms of, just in terms of, you know, I guess, you know, knowing the field and all, I guess in terms of, you hear about this and you see in the, about how people, about the, the attachment to cars, is that, that that has been changing, I guess, as people have been getting, you know, you know, I, I think younger generations, I sound very old now, but younger generations are, are not as attached to cars as maybe some of the, you know, the older generations. Are you seeing anything in that? Are we looking at, is there a progression where people will be more likely, rather than owning a car, will be doing ride share, will be doing other bike or other stuff?
That's a great question. I don't have the statistics off the top of my head, but they are posted in the break room at my office. So I can take a photo and send them to Josh tomorrow. Because there was a study that was done that looked at transportation preferences by age. And I forget if, I think it looked at millennial and Gen Z. And there was a, a very strong preference towards not relying on cars and walking and biking and taking transit. Kind of on the other end, AARP has actually been one of the biggest proponents of, of mobility, yeah, mobility options and, and what we would kind of call smart growth or sustainable development in terms of being able, for, for seniors in particular, to be able to access goods and services and live a healthy, independent life. We, as part of the survey actually that we've put out, we have a series of optional demographic questions at the end. We, as part of the survey actually that we've put out, we have a series of optional demographic questions at the end, and that is partly for us to be able to make sure that we're trying to track as closely as we can to overall demographics in town. But then also, if it's, you know, if, if the data kind of leads us to it, um, maybe pulling out data by different demographics. And so, um, one of the, I think, most brilliant things that Brian did as part of this project is he was able to get taking the survey to be counted as community service credit with the high schoolers. And so as soon as that email went out, we had a spike in under eighteen taking our survey. But since, you know, kind of, uh, kind of flattened a bit, so it's, it's actually pretty representative of the town. But I'll be interested to see that.
But in terms of the study though, you, you have the stats of, you know, the current stats in terms of population figures, so in terms of whatever the study shows, you'll be able to see sort of, you know, I guess normalize it all, right?
Yeah, yeah. And we can also, again, if the data's compelling, we can say, um, people under eighteen prefer X, people over sixty-five prefer Y, or, you know, that sort of thing. Especially when it comes to, for example, thinking about the senior center. The, the senior center director actually had shared data on the shuttle that we're working on incorporating into the analysis as well. So I think that will probably provide something interesting to look at.
And I think to the extent that people, I think people like to be able to, I think the whole idea of, I think also looking at this, the complete streets, I think people like to be able to, you know, to the extent they can, to be able to walk to places, to be able to not have to get into the car for everything, you know, even that's, that's something that, you know, living, we live sort of close to downtown, so it's nice to be able to, you know, go to the, go up the street to get a bottle of milk or something like that, if you don't, without having to get in the car for everything.
Yeah. So before we go to public comment, I might just wrap up with a few additional slides, if that's okay?
That's fine.
And then we can have a, a broader discussion. So in addition to the data that we had pulled, looking at all these specific statistics, we were looking big picture at the recommendations from these different plans and studies. And we found seven different plans that were done in the past ten years, which is generally the frame of reference that we use for these kinds of past plan analyses. And there were actually over forty transportation-related recommendations, so there's no shortage of recommendations that already exist. We won't have to be, uh, you know, rebuilding the wheel here. But what I think was interesting was the different topics that the recommendations fell into across all of these different plans. And so, as you can imagine, parking was a big one, especially in the downtown parking study. And, um, and energy and emissions was a big one from resilient Danvers. But some of these other topics, like active transportation, which is kind of the broad category we use to talk about walking and biking and, uh, what some people call rolling, so using like scooters or things like that. And then also looking at transit, looking at public realm improvements, so, um, I forget Lou, if it was you who was talking about signage downtown, right? Like, that would be considered a public realm improvement. And then also planning, so something like the Complete Streets prioritization plan, or having a repaving plan, also came up in these recommendations. So one of the things we're interested in doing with, with our recommendations, our sort of meta-recommendations, is thinking about how they relate to these different topics. And since I am a planner, uh, I always go back to what is the, the kind of community vision and the community goals, which in this case was expressed through Strategic Danvers, which, um, was a really robust community process and, and done fairly recently. So there were five goals that came out of this process, and I highlighted the two that I think really have the strongest correlation to transportation, um, although I think you can make the argument that, that all of them are connected. The first one is about preserving and enhancing parks, open spaces, sidewalks, and streets. So that's thinking not only about kind of transportation, uh, in terms of people getting around, but also the recreation aspect as well. And then the other is being intentional about growth in Danvers and recognizing that connection between land use and transportation and how they influence each other. So the, the thing that I'll kind of leave you on is the, the two-sided coin, right? Challenge on one side, opportunity on the other, and thinking about some of the goals that were mentioned in Strategic Danvers, and, and I kind of reformulated he, them here in terms of thinking about what can the town control relative to transportation improvements. And so one thing that seemed really important was about supporting downtown businesses that came across in multiple plans. Another important goal was about reducing traffic and congestion. And then the third one that, that I really saw come out of, um, of these plans was providing mobility options for people who don't drive. And that's not necessarily something that I think people are saying directly, but it comes about indirectly through some of the other goals and recommendations. And so, um, so if, if those three questions, you know, those three goals are resonating with you, that's great, but if they don't, if you think that there are other things that are important, curious to hear about that. If you think that there are specific recommendations that the town should focus on, especially in the next three years, whether that's something perhaps, um, at a higher level, like talking about the Salem Skipper and expanding the service area there, or if it's something very specific, like we need to improve the crosswalks at this one particular intersection. And then lastly, just kind of thinking about what it would take to move some of these recommendations forward. So Danvers does not have a transportation department, you don't have a transportation planner. A lot of transportation work is, uh, is divided between the, um, blanking now, community dev, planning and community development? What's the name of your department?
Yeah, that's our-
Okay, the Planning and Community Development Department?
Land use and community development.
The Land Use and Community Development Department?
Service, services, yeah.
That department, yeah. The planners, um, and the engineers in the Department of Public Works, right? So also kind of thinking about, um, what are the other priorities of those departments and those staff? What are the constraints that they're working under? And, and how does that impact the types of recommendations that, that you want to prioritize? So we can leave it there, just reflections, questions, um, and then, uh, at the end, I'll just come back to the slide with the information about the survey.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you for, thanks for the presentation. Any other, any other questions or comments for members of the board? I want to hear from members of the public if they have any comments or questions.
I would just add to the first item, um, support downtown businesses and new residents, because in the next three years, we could see a couple hundred new residential units, um, in downtown. So I think we need to factor that into the equation, because they will be, um, you know, parking at their residences and hopefully, you know, taking advantage of walking and, and, um, the stores and businesses downtown, but also, um, they'll have guests and there'll be some increased retail development, I think, as part of it, but you're gonna have a lot, potentially a lot more residents downtown. I know I talked to someone the other day about the, the hundred and forty-plus unit development on Maple, uh, crossing down there, and, um, I'm told they already have about forty-five people that have applied for apartments. So, um, in three years, that should be fully tenanted, along with if the Danvers hardware development gets off the ground and someone starts building that, and then Murphy's and, you know, some other smaller developments, but, you know, in three years, you could see, you know, a couple hundred more residences in there, and they could vary from studio to two to three, two, not really many threes, but twos and one unit, um, one-bedroom apartments, so you could see a fair amount of growth.
Yeah.
So.
Gene, anything further or any questions?
No.
I would only make, I, I would make a suggestion as well in terms of provide mobility options for people who don't drive, or for those who choose not to drive, or choose to drive less. Sort of picking up with that, even the, you know, the, sort of the, I think the happiness slide you had there in terms of people who, you know, so you might be of a situation where someone, you know, they have a, you know, have a car, and, but they just don't, they, they may not want to, you know, they want that transportation option where they want to go, um, you know, maybe they, they, they want to go to the mall without having to deal with, you know, without wanting, without having to drive that particular time, or they want to go to Logan Express and not have to, to, um, you know, to, to, to get an Uber or bother, bother a friend for a ride.
Mm-hmm, yeah, thank you.
I want to see if anyone from the, from members of the public, if they had any comments or questions or thoughts, definitely. Mr. McKenzie, come on up and- Go for it. Just introduce yourself for the record.
Bill McKenzie, thirty-four Harbor Street. I think this is a really good presentation, but it's really old. A lot of the data and everything is, you know, two thousand and fifteen, a little bit further up. As we were talking, you, you were talking earlier about how many more people are going to be in downtown Danvers, that the parking is going to be a problem. So we should have some type of service to get people in and out of the square and go further into our town. I don't think bike lanes are going to be what we're looking for, because I don't think this is a town for bike lanes, but I think taking the sidewalks that we do have and making sure they're maintained properly, get all the brush and all the debris and everything that falls on these sidewalks and maintain it. I know right now people say, "Oh, it's the person that owns the house in front of the sidewalk." You know, that doesn't work. A lot of people are lazy. I think us as a town, and we should all get together and do that and maintain our sidewalks. Other than that, I don't have anything else to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, yeah, Mr. Bouchard?
John Bouchard, don't make fun of me, but down in Florida, in developments down there, people have a car and they have a golf cart. A golf cart's a possibility to go into downtown Danvers to eliminate a lot of the traffic congestion. I wouldn't mind taking a golf cart, I mean, I only live, you know, a mile away, I wouldn't mind taking a golf cart. Would that help alleviate some of the congestion in downtown Danvers? It may be, it works very well in Florida. People put their car in the garage and they drive around that golf cart all over, and they're on roads, they got number plates on them, they're licensed, they share the road with cars.
Yeah, there's, there's a resident near me that has one. Yeah.
Oh, really?
In Reservoir, he has one, yeah.
People try to outdo each other with the golf carts down there, not regular golf carts, you look at them, they, they look better than most cars, but they work.
Yeah. Is, is that something that, just picking up on that, I mean, is that something that's, that's done in Massachusetts?
I was not prepared for that question. Um, I, I am curious about, so, um, I, I too have driven golf carts in Florida, um, yeah, in Key West, where they are the cars. Yep, yeah, exactly. Take a golf cart just straight down. And I think, yeah, I, I don't know in terms of like, if it's a town-owned road versus, you know, the highway, like, there's probably restrictions there. And then I don't know if it's like something that the state allows across the board versus like a town would have to get permission from the state. So, I mean, certainly I can ask around about it. I think, um, part of what you're referencing is what transportation planners will often call, um, the first and last mile connection, right? And so for, for some folks, you can achieve that through biking, right? So like, I actually bike a mile to get to a bus to go to work. And if I wasn't able to bike, um, it makes my commute a lot more of a headache. But not everyone can bike, and a mile is, is generally like too far for people to walk comfortably. So then is there an option like the Salem Skipper where you could just, on demand, you know, get, get a quick ride and you're not necessarily waiting every thirty minutes for a bus or something like that? I do think, yeah, those first and last mile connections are the trickiest ones, for sure. Yeah.
That's good, okay.
Hello, Lauren Steves, um, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. Interesting you bring up the golf carts. I, I think it works really well down, my in-laws live in the Carolinas, they live in a, a community and they take their golf cart everywhere. There's also no stop, there's no stoplights, there's no intersections, you know, they go down to the pool or the bar, the restaurant there, and it's kind of a miles and miles of community, but you're not going out on main roads. I do know that you can get them to be, um, street legal, because I've seen someone driving down by Plains Park, uh, one last summer, but, what I will say is I, I'm a millennial and I, ten times out of ten, will choose to drive myself everywhere, because I like to be in control. It's just a personal choice. It's my, my husband feels the same way, I have a lot of friends who feel the same way. That's just a personal choice. I will say, um, that MBTA bus was taken out of service because there, there was low ridership. There was not, uh, an overwhelming need for it. I would be concerned about limiting parking downtown, um, because as we know, Maple Square is set to open in the next month or so. From what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, there is zoning for X amount of spaces for the hundred and forty-nine apartments. The people who own Maple Square are allowing one parking space per unit, and they're charging for all other allotted spaces on that property, which is going to push people into that municipal lot full-time, all the time, parking their cars there. So, hundred and forty-nine apartments, there's five three-bedrooms, there's about sixty-two bedrooms, then you have one-bedrooms and studios, and maybe you have couples who have two cars living in the one-bedrooms. We might have a lot of cars that we're not anticipating. And people who don't frankly want to pay for the second spot, so they just say, "Oh, there's a municipal spot, uh, parking lot right across the street, I'm just gonna park there for free."
You're saying like, like potentially, they'll, they'll, maybe they'll, oh, they'll pay for the one spot and take their chances?
No, they'll take their free spot and they won't pay for the second spot and they'll park in the municipal lot, because I, if that was me, I'd be doing that. You know, you might have three, three twenty-somethings or thirty-somethings that they can't afford anything, so they're gonna split that three-bedroom apartment and they're gonna have three cars, because they might travel for their job. I know my husband just got a promotion, now he's gonna be traveling all of New England. People's jobs change all the time, their needs for where they're going change all the time. And I guess I just have like, I, I want a, a clarification on what it means to make downtown more walkable. Because I, I don't know if you're talking in the sense of sidewalks or in the sense of people getting there, because if you live on Dayton Street or on the Beverly Line, downtown's never gonna be a walkable area for you. You're never gonna be able to walk to downtown from your residence, it's just, it's too many miles. So I don't know if you mean walkability in the sense of like, hey, everyone in town should just start walking downtown from their residences, or maintaining sidewalks, or, or what that kind of looks like.
All right, can I ask, may I, may I ask, can I clarify, what does that generally mean in terms of the, when you say walkability of downtown, what does that generally entail?
I think it means walkability once you are downtown. So less about going to and from, and more about once you're there, like you were saying, having well-maintained sidewalks and signage and, and benches and crosswalks and, and good lighting and, yeah.
Okay.
Trees.
Yeah, I mean, I, I totally agree with all of that. I think that's great to have well-marked sidewalks and benches and, and all of that kind of stuff. I a hundred percent agree with that. I also personally feel that any money that, you know, any of these recommendations or money, I would love to see our roads and our sidewalks also be repaired and up-kept. I drove down, I don't know what street it was, Colgate, somewhere in Woodville, and I was like, holy cow, this, I used to have a paper route there when I was twelve years old, and I was like, wow, the, the street's terrible. So I would really like to see money to be spent on, on keeping up our roads and, um, sidewalks, so, so people have the opportunity to walk if they so choose. Yeah, so that, those are my thoughts on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bradstreet, did you have something? Sorry, your hand up?
While he's going up, I am curious, are, are the municipal lots not enforced, regulated? So in terms of like-
Do you have a parking, we have a parking officer?
There is, okay.
And is, and has, has planning office, they, they, you, you've received, I think, complaints if someone's been overparked there for someone?
Not usually the municipal lots, but, um, if something rises to a situation where it's a common issue, we, we are in communication with, you know, other staff, you know, top staff.
But there's a lot on Hobart, uh, is that twenty-four hours?
I'm not sure about that, that comment that was brought up tonight, I'm not sure, I don't, I'm not sure about that, I was thinking about that, actually.
Is there a time limit on Hobart?
That's, that's probably, if, there's no time limit, I guess as we speak, then, there's not.
So would that be, isn't, wouldn't the selectmen regulate, or is they just regulate on-street parking? So would you need to have the selectmen in or?
I believe if you were to make any change or policy change in, on-street or in a municipal lot, I believe-
Right. Right.
that they would probably have, they would have to.
Go before the select.
The selectmen and the park commissioners, but I would think if, if, if that's an issue that's going to come up,
Right.
then that may have to be addressed quickly.
It's possible, yeah.
Yeah.
To prevent that problem. But I think it's a common thing for newer developments like that to charge for parking even, believe it or not. They do it in Beverly. They do it in other, other.
But if, if we're mandating a zoning, we're saying you have to, you have to provide a hundred and eighty spots. And they're saying, well, we'll give them a hundred and twenty, but we're going to charge the other sixty. We're mandating that they have to have those spaces, but then we're, we're going to turn around and allow them to charge people for it?
We can't regulate. We can't regulate whether they charge or not. That's not something we can regulate.
So you were saying that, okay, we mandate a hundred and seventy-nine spots, you're going to pay for all hundred and seventy-nine spots.
Then they, then they won't rent there if they don't want to pay. But I can tell you, there, there are a lot of newer construction in Beverly, and that's what they, they charge. Not only, they're charging you for your apartment fee, water. They charge you for water and sewer. They charge you for utilities, and they charge you for parking. A lot of the stuff on Rantool that came, got built recently, it's like a condo, but you're renting it. And you have to pay for parking, just because there's a demand. Well, again, then, don't rent there. You, you know it, eyes wide open, renting. And the, and the whole just, the whole justification for that zoning was to encourage people to have one car. Downsize from your house, if you're seniors, into these apartments, one car from two cars. Or you're a millennial, you come in, you're going to take advantage of the public transportation, which we don't really have, and/or other modes of transportation, and you and your other, significant other use one car. So that's really the push of that zoning. That's why they got the density bonus. That's why, instead of requiring two parking spaces for a two-bedroom, it's like one and a half. And so that's, that's the zoning. That's what, that's how that building got built. But you can't, you can't, the planning department can't regulate how a private business charges for parking or not. You know what I mean? They provide the parking.
Right.
And they meet the numbers. That's just like, back in the day, you'd go to Elmy's in Salem, and you'd have to pay to park in their parking lot. That's just the private, you know, I mean, you can't.
Still have to pay for that park, for that park.
Most places, like in downtown Beverly, you park anywhere in Beverly, on Rantool, it's all metered. Everything's metered. We're not at that point, and hopefully we won't get to that point. But, but that's a way of them collecting revenue to maintain their roadways, to maintain their sidewalks, and to grab some additional revenue. And those parking meters are there till like, nine at night. It used to be, you know, eight to six, yeah.
Back in, I remember as a kid going like, to Woolworths and all, they had parking meters in downtown. Yeah, remember that.
Now they take your credit card, because you don't need a meter made.
Exactly. Mr. Bradstreet.
Sorry, Mr. Bradstreet.
No, we're here for information.
Yeah.
That's why we want to hear comments. One of the things that got me is, one, two, three, four, five, there were six citizens here. I know the argument is, I can always watch it on TV. Is anybody calling in with questions? They aren't. A lot of people choose not to involve themselves with the town, which is unfortunate. One of the things I've said at other meetings is, what's being discussed here, what's being presented, maybe not to the extent of the pages, but everyone gets an electric bill. Put some information in an electric bill to keep, or put it out there. If the people choose to ignore it, shame on them. But put the information out there for the people to, this is Danvers, this is what's going on. This is what we'd like to do. This is what we'd like not to do. This is how we're going to do it. Again, put it out there. If they ignore it, shame on them. If they get involved, that's what we're looking for.
Now, on that point, I was just going to ask real quickly in terms of the survey. I think this is an op, I think the survey is a really good opportunity for people to participate. If someone's watching and is, and wants to, to take the survey, Josh, what do they need to do? And, and frankly, I think all survey responses are, if, even if someone, if, if someone fills out a survey and says, I drive everywhere, and that's the way I, I think we, I think we need to know that.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Where do people find out about the survey?
So, so the, the slide on the screen has a QR code. If you are a QR code user, you can access the, the online survey that way. There's also the shortened URL, which you can type out there. If you go to the town's website, there is also, the, the link is listed there. I don't know if it's gotten buried under other things, but.
I don't think, no. Can someone come to Town Hall and get a, get a?
Yes, there are also physical copies of the survey. I know that they had been distributed to, I think, the library and the senior center, and I think that there are also maybe some available in Town Hall. But I would encourage folks to contact Brian Zickelli, the Planning Director, about that. I, I'm helping with more of the behind-the-scenes, and, and he's the one out there pounding the pavement.
Okay.
You may have seen him at the pancake breakfast.
He was at the pancake breakfast?
As far as the parking meters, when I was very young, Chet Clinch used to go around with the golf cart dolly and empty the parking meters in the square, source of revenue for the town.
I remember Chet Clinch.
Encourage them to get some, I'm old enough to remember that. And it, revenue for the town, encouraging people, this is a limit. If you stay beyond, you're going to have to run back and pay, or move, or get a parking ticket. Danvers to me is a drive-through community, connecting Route One, One Twenty-Eight, Sixty-Two. We have a lot of traffic to, through the town, whether they park or not park. I half-heartedly suggested that we put a parking garage down in the square someplace. I don't mean it, but if there's parking problems, put a parking garage down there. I don't mean it, but it's the, if you, if we don't have the parking. Some of the questions that, thought brought up in the past was what parking we have downtown is not properly or better identified.
Right, signage issues.
And people my age get used to driving as opposed to walking. Not everybody, but some of us, I want to, I want to drive to where I want to go, spend a little time driving to and from, a little time what I've got to do when I want to get home and relax. It's a very busy world. As far as the sidewalks downtown, maintaining them, that's a, that should be a year-round job. I know in the wintertime, it's very difficult to walk downtown with the sidewalks not cleaned or sanded or salted so that you don't take your life in your hands trying to get from here to there. My understanding was they did a traffic study for the Maple Square. And again, we're a, a drive-through community, and I, I forget the exact figure. I'll say twenty thousand cars drive through Danvers. And I don't know if that's in a day or, or if that was a week study, but it's a lot of traffic through the town. Not all of them are going to need parking spots, however, some of them will, and they have to be rotated. Yeah, bring back the parking meters, bring Chet back, Chet Clinch, wasn't it?
Thank you. Okay, anything, anything further on this at all from members of the board or? Everybody, Josh, anything from, from staff, anything you wanted to add or anything?
Nope, no service, service show. I mean, we'll be, if anything obviously comes up. So I guess if you get a little bit of timeline.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's the timeline? Where do we go, where do we go from here?
Yeah, I can wrap up with next steps. So, we've had the survey open essentially since, since the special town meeting. And we are planning on closing at April eighteenth, so it's a Friday right before school vacation. And then after that point, we will analyze the survey data, and we will use that as one of the data points in addition to this conversation, the existing conditions analysis we had done. We've also been doing interviews with various community-based organizations and service providers, like the Boys and Girls Club and the Chamber of Commerce, to try to understand from their perspective and the people that they serve, what some of the transportation challenges are.
The Beverly Chamber of Commerce?
Sorry?
The Beverly Chamber?
Greater Beverly Chamber of Commerce, yeah. So, so anyway, we'll, we'll kind of take all of those inputs and, and then put together draft recommendations that we will share back with the town for that to be reviewed. Brian will kind of take the lead on that. So I think, you know, if, if you as a board are interested in, in seeing those draft recommendations and possibly discussing them, then, you know, I'd share that with Josh and.
I'd say yes.
That might not be me coming back to present, but it might be just sharing comments back to us on those recommendations. And then, everything will be wrapped up by the end of June because that's, that's the funding deadline. So, so we will have some sort of final deliverable plan that will reflect all this information back to you, along with some top recommendations.
Great. All right. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, just go, yep. Just identify yourself for the record.
Yeah, Lois McKenzie, Precinct Three, Town Meeting Member. I just want to say, I know there's a lot of interest in bike lanes. I don't know if anybody's driven through Salem, summer, winter, whenever. It's a nightmare. But I, I honestly think you need to look at numbers and compare the number of people that you, you might think by doing bike lanes would be a great idea. And I, I don't even know if that's being considered. But a heck of a lot more people walk in this town than they do ride bikes. I will walk sometimes six miles, depending on, you know, my grandchildren, if they're willing to go. But I will tell you, the sidewalks, they are not up to par in this town. I literally have the carriage like this, so my grandson doesn't fall over. And it's been like this, I have a granddaughter who's eight now. It's been like this since I've had, had them. I live down Danversport. The sidewalks on River Street, you go down the end of River, there's McDowell Ave. There's tons of apartments, condos. These kids walk to Riverside. And those sidewalks, when the, when the street was repaved, I probably, four or five years ago, I said, are you going to do the sidewalks? No sidewalks, we're done. There are craters on the side of the road that you gather water, which just backs up right over the sidewalks. So, you just have to think in, in a large way, there are a lot more walkers than there are people that are going to ride a bike, especially three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And I'm not one of those people to stay in the house. My kids, my grandchildren, they get bundled up and we go out. So, it's just something to think about, okay?
Thank you.
So, that's it for me. Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it. All right, well, very good. Good discussion. Let's move on to our, our next item here, which they, this is a, our public hearing, Fifty Independence Way. It's a request for site plan review pursuant to Section Four of the zoning bylaws submitted by Chick-fil-A. Care of Bowler Engineering for property in the Commercial Three, C Three zoning district. The applicant proposes a standalone restaurant with a drive-through and associated site modifications. Map sixty-three, Lot Five, Unit One. And Josh, we have a update on this one. I believe that they're, they've requested a continuance?
That's right.
Yep. Okay, so.
Yeah, so they've requested a continuance to our next meeting on April eighth.
Okay.
So we would need a, a motion to continue this item.
Okay, so I'd like to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on Fifty Independence Way to the April eighth Planning Board meeting?
I make a motion, we continue Fifty Independence Way to our next meeting, April eighth.
Okay, motion's been made by Gene. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Jim. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? None. Okay, so Trask Lane, full release of covenant. Request for a full release of a covenant established on August twenty-eighth, nineteen seventy-two, which is associated with the definitive subdivision plan entitled Proposed Access to Follyhill Development, Danvers, Mass, and dated June second, nineteen seventy-two, and also known as Trask Lane, Danvers, Mass. And Josh, similarly, which is a?
Yep, very similar. The, the applicant team has requested a continuance to our next meeting on April eighth, this item, this application.
All right, so that's a, okay, and so that's, that's a, so I'll just continue, continue until April eighth, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to continue, I guess it's not really, it's, it's not a public hearing on this one. So it's to continue the.
Yeah, the application.
To continue the application of Trask Lane for the full release of covenant to our next meeting of April eighth.
I make a motion, we continue Trask Lane Full Release of Covenant to our next meeting, April eighth.
Okay, it's been made by Gene. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim. Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? None. Okay, so we have minutes here. I think these are the minutes from our, our March eleventh meeting. Okay, everyone had the chance to review these? If so.
Motion to accept the minutes on March eleventh.
Second.
Made by Jim, second by Gene. Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? None. Okay, so, let's see, so what do we have? So coming up next, Josh, I, so I, we have a couple of items, I guess now, which are continued to April eighth, so Fifty Independence Way and Trask Lane.
That's right.
So, and what else?
And then we will have, there's a new.
Speak up a little bit.
Yep, sorry, there's a new hearing for special, for special permit and site plan application for Sixty-One High Street, which will open on that evening.
So that will open on April eighth. That's the, that's the, the building close to the, the phone company.
That's right, to the right, the first, right, the first parcel to the right of, if I'm looking straight at the Verizon building to the right.
Okay. Okay.
It's a mixed-use project with proposing like, eight residential units.
Proposing eight residential units, okay. So that'll be on up, that'll be, that's on the agenda for the April eighth.
Yes, and there's also an administrative matter. There was a A and R slash perimeter plan submitted today that will also be on that April eighth meeting.
Okay, what part of the, is that?
So, it's for thirty, thirty-six Maple Street downtown.
Thirty to thirty-six?
Yes.
Downtown Maple Street, okay. Okay.
So those are the four, as we speak, items for our April eighth meeting.
Okay, and I know we, and just picking up from our, I, I think we discussed this maybe a couple of meetings ago, after the special town meeting, the, the lighting articles were
Sure.
were referred back to the planning board. I know there was even a discussion, I think at yesterday's zoning board of appeals meeting, I think there was a question about the lighting.
Sure.
Sort of the lighting and such, I think, as it related to Pine Street.
Right, so I think that, yeah.
So I think it's worthy of, maybe at our next meeting, putting it on the agenda to at least open a discussion about sort of where we go from here.
Sure, yep, yep, we could do that, yes.
Of lighting and.
And when we, right, when we want to, just like the planning process about, you know, what town meeting it would be on and when the process would be and that type of thing, yep.
Yeah, just sort of walk through logistics and, and sort of, sort of a game plan for, because it would be going on, because it would be looking at, at going on to our next special town meeting, so probably.
Which has not been confirmed or, an idea has been floated, like, February of twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
Yep.
And I know that in the meantime, I think we had some, I think there was, there was a, there was a, I think we, the town staff received a comment from, which I, I received, which I forwarded, I think, to.
Oh, yes.
That there was a comment from a town meeting member, who I think had spoke at the special town meeting. And I think also there was some, I think probably we'd want to look at the comments from, I think, Mr. Bennett, who spoke at the meeting as well.
Sure, yep, yep, all of those public comments could, or, you know, will be incorporated or discussed as we go through the process.
Okay, yeah, so if we can just at least get that on the agenda for the eighth, and maybe just, we may not have a, because there's some other items on there. We may not have a lengthy discussion, but at least start.
Sure.
Talking about it.
Yep.
And I think we've also, just also in terms of planning, sort of looking at the next, maybe the next meeting after, I think we've, we've also, and it was just, just received, there were some citizens petitions?
Yep, there was a couple citizens petitions regarding planning and zoning-related articles for the upcoming annual town meeting. So I believe I'm gonna, I believe we discussed, just adding them as like, discussion items, discussion items. We will probably discuss them at the following meeting on April twenty-second.
April twenty-second?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, April twenty-second meeting to discuss. And so these are some, not to get into that, but there's some, they're citizens petitions, and I. get into that, but there, there's some, they're citizens petitions, and I believe they dealt with the, um, uh, sort of with the downtown or MBTA?
Yep, yep, that's right. Yep.
Will they be presenting at that meeting?
Uh, I'm not sure that, that, I think it might be just a discussion with the board, but obviously, if we're discussing it in this public environment, you know, the public is able to, you know, if we're willing to, you know, entertain comments, if it's the will of the board or the chair.
Yeah, because it's just in terms of the, I mean, because ultimately, I think that the, that the, um, I would imagine that town meeting would want the, the board to, to weigh in in terms of
Sure.
in terms of, at least our, our, our thoughts with respect to that.
That seems inappropriate, appropriate.
I would assume they would want a, a recommendation passing on to, um, Finance Committee. Typically, that's what we would do
Sure.
for each zoning article.
Sure. There's like one zoning article and then two, like, two resolutions, essentially, so. And then also at that April twenty-second meeting, there was a, there'll be a special permit application for One Eighty Endicott Street, um, the former, um, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond tenant space for, um, indoor pickleball, so.
Indoor pickleball?
Yeah.
For the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond space?
Yep. The, uh, indoor, indoor entertainment in that property, uh, they require, they need a special permit for that use, so that's why it's in front of the board.
That's Commercial Three.
That's right.
And that would be becoming before, before us on the April?
April twenty-second.
April twenty-second?
Yep. So. Lots of top, lots of applications and discussion in April.
Okay.
The, the April twenty-second meeting, I won't be here, I could probably do remote.
Okay, we could, we could talk through that a little bit, because I think Lou also mentioned that, that's, um.
I will be in, I'll be on a work trip in Illinois, so I'll be able to participate remotely on the?
I believe, I believe as long as we have three members, so I could just check in, as long as we have three members who can physically be here, um, I think that might work, but I'll circle back on that shortly.
Okay. And in terms of sort of coordination, in terms of discussion on any of the, um, on